Call order to the city council work session for City of East Grand Forks, Tuesday, March 12th, 2019 is now. Please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Gressel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Federer.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
And Mark Demers.
President.
Does it term quorum? Number one, environmental study, phase one report for water tower property. Mr. Emery, I guess I will try to take that over.
So the Sacred Heart Church has requested to purchase that parcel of land right adjacent to the school there, kind of for the expansion of a future parking lot area. And I know city staff, council has expressed concerns in regards to the liability of the sale of that property due to potential contamination sources. Therefore, Savrells basically hired Wink Associates to complete a phase one environmental site assessment of that property, which is included here. Pretty thick document if you guys want to read through it. So when David gave it to me, what I did is I reached out to one of our environmental engineers, basically just to kind of summarize, I guess quickly, what was in there. And basically what he says was there was two, what they called recognized environmental conditions adjacent to the city property. He said they were basically in the report categorized as controlled, recognized environmental But he did say that however they should have been categorized as controlled, recognized environmental conditions because they have been investigated and addressed to the satisfaction of the MPCA. In fact, didn't know it, but WSN had kind of worked on those two project sites years ago. He did say that the contamination was limited to the immediate release area for both sites. And due to the heavy clay soils, you know, further contamination is unlikely. So I guess long and short of it, he said that the city is not responsible for addressing contamination as these sites because they did not own or operate the tanks, which were the source of contamination. So he didn't, I guess, long and short of it, he didn't feel that the city really had any liability if they were to sell that property because those sites had been contained and everything to the satisfaction of MPCA, so.
So you mean contained, if it's dug up, will it be uncontained then?
No, no. Because basically these sites are adjacent. I mean, it was basically the Worley Site and the old Grand Forks Grocery Site. You know, those are two sites and they're contained to those areas, you know, just due to the heavy clay soils and stuff, so.
So the site itself has no issues? Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mayor. I think if we could take a moment and just review kind of where we are then, did we, for example, receive any payment? Do you remember that we did request that this phase one be completed? Now they've completed it. And can we kind of recreate the history to bring us up to date then as to where did we leave off in the negotiation with Sacred Heart? I'd like to see that we could maybe move along. Of course, we don't want to rush it, but yeah, we don't want to lag it either. They have a need for this as for their parking and, you know, a lot of construction going on and whatnot. So could we review, did we receive any payment for that pending the phase one? Or what is the status of that?
That I am not aware of.
Mr. Gertie, do you have anything to add to that, sir?
It's my recollection that there was earnest money put down. I do not know whether any additional money has been put down on that at this point.
Yes, there was. I gave both the check numbers to Mr.
Murphy.
Murphy.
Yeah, I don't have that information.
I assumed he followed up on it, but it was $500 earnest money and then we paid another check of $50,500.
To the total.
Total $6,000 total price.
Good.
That was received last summer.
So perhaps we could tie it up and maybe have it ready if they've complied with our request on the front end and done the phase one and it shows the property clear, hopefully we can go on to that next step and complete the transaction. Maybe Ron could have that ready, whatever he has to do before the next council meeting.
I agree.
I would imagine Water Light wants to put their easements on there.
I think we're already.
They're already there, I think.
Mr. Demers, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay.
Scratch them ahead.
Okay. I apologize, Mr. Murphy is not present at the time, so we will relay it back to him that we need to move forward. And then if we need to address any other issues, I'll ask him to correspond with us, letting us know what that is. And then make sure you and anybody who's in the loop on it.
Should he reach out to both of you guys or just to Punky? Okay, perfect. You got that.
Sounds good. Oh, Dale, sorry.
Mr. President, are we just going to move us on to the council meeting then to approve it and move on with it and get done? Or is there other stuff that needs to be done for?
Well, I think we need to make sure with Mr. Murphy because the action tonight was just sort of environmental.
Okay.
And then since we were in the process already, this was one of those aspects of moving it forward.
Mr. Dolstead, a final review probably.
Right.
So we can get her going.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
Good to have you here.
Do you guys have anything to add? Punky, you have anything to add?
Just be grateful. Moving forward.
We sure need the parking.
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks a lot.
62 employees show up to work there every day, not count coaches or volunteers. We can use that for parking.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll move it on then. Thank you. Number two, discussion on establishing a quiet zone. Mr. Emery.
Mr. President, so there's been kind of requests from, I guess, various entities within the community, kind of requesting the city to again look at what it would take to implement a quiet zone, basically through town, from the railroad bridge, just past the Second Avenue Northeast crossing. Therefore, kind of at the request of Mr. Murphy, we've done some preliminary work to see what is all required to get a quiet zone established. The first of those requirements is basically to conduct a diagnostic meeting with the Federal Railroad and members from BNSF. So we did hold that meeting last May. We started, I guess, the meeting out at our office and then we kind of concluded the meeting out and visited each of the three sites. And at that meeting, we did have representatives from BNSF, Federal Railroad, MINDOT, Sacred Heart, and also members or staff from the City of East Grand Forks. And again, during those meetings, we reviewed all three crossings and kind of got some recommendations from both Federal Railroad and BNSF, just what improvements would need to be made at each of those crossings. Probably won't go through it, I did put in the RCA just again, some of the minimum requirements to get a quiet zone established. But based on our onsite meeting, the first site we visited was the crossing at Third Street Northwest. In review of this crossing, the first recommendation that we got from FRA and BNSF was to basically close the intersection, kind of due to the configuration of the existing roads and stuff, and just the impacts that, including any supplementary safety measures, what the impacts those would have on traffic flow over there. That was kind of the first recommendation. The second recommendation would be to install a four quadrant gate system there. So essentially with, you know, with a four quadrant gate system, you're completely closing off, you know, the entire intersection, you know, no way or you don't have the ability to drive around the gates. And then the third option would be to install basically a three gate system, along with installing some supplementary safety measures such as medians and such that would, you know, kind of prohibit you from driving around the gates. So that was kind of the, let's say, the three options we kind of discussed at that intersection. Central Avenue crossing, that crossing as far as the gates, the railroad equipment, everything was pretty much up to snuff on that as far as what we would need. However, we would have to install some medians and such at that intersection, again, just basically to prohibit vehicles from wanting to drive around the gates. That's kind of what the, you know, the medians try to prohibit. And then the Second Avenue crossing, again, we'd be required to install some medians. But then also with the intersection of Business Highway Two and Second there being so close, they recommended that we'd have to have a traffic engineering study completed, just to kind of determine if vehicle present detectors would be required. And basically what that is, is if there's a train coming, that would detect if there's vehicles on the tracks adjacent to it so that the gates don't close or they remain open at least long enough to let the, you know, the traffic get out of there. So one thing to keep in mind, at these three intersections, MPO did a traffic count in 2017. At the intersection of Second Avenue, we had about 6,000 ADT. Central Avenue was about 500 ADT. And Third Street Northwest was about 400 ADT. So with that, I've kind of put together some, kind of some rough cost estimates with kind of the help of BNSF. But they said they won't provide detailed estimates until basically you have a complete plan showing exactly what you're going to do. So, you know, the numbers we got are, you know, they're good preliminary numbers, something to start with, but, you know, they're definitely not probably the final numbers either, so. So with that, you know, on the first page, you know, at Second Avenue, you know, we're just replacing the signal system, installation of some supplementary safety measures. We also have pedestrian improvements that we'd have to address there, you know, looking at about a total of about 567,000. Central Avenue, you know, again, like I said, most of the railroad equipment there is good, but we would still have to install some medians, do some pedestrian improvements. They also recommended between Third Street and Central Avenue to put up a fence along there to kind of deter kids, pedestrians from, you know, wanting to cut across railroad tracks there between those two intersections. So there, we're looking at about 122,000 roughly. And then at Third Street Northwest, if we were to look at basically a three quadrant gate system, along with some supplementary safety measures, along with pedestrian improvements, that intersection alone, you're looking at about almost 909,000, so very expensive. So in total, you know, with everything, you know, you can see the bottom line there, you know, we could be nearing that $2 million figure with a three quadrant gate system. And then just kind of for comparison purposes, the next page, I did look at a four quadrant gate system. And what that really does, I didn't really spell it out clearly there, but what that does to overall project cost, if we were to look at a four quadrant gate system at Third Street, the total project cost could be about 2.3 million. And then one thing that was kind of brought up during our diagnostic meeting was, you know, Federal Railroad, BNSF, you know, they definitely in these quiet zones, they like to see crossings closed. So as an incentive, if you, if we were to look at closing Third Street, they would offer to cover 50% of the signal system improvement that we'd have to do at Second Avenue Northeast. So long and short of it is, just roughly, if we were to close Third Street and do the improvements at Second and Central, we're looking at a total project cost of about 652,000. So it's going to be totally your guys' decision, you know, keep it open, close it. But again, I mean, we're looking at 652,000 versus, you know, a four gate system at Third. You know, again, I was at, what did I say?
2.3.
2.3 million. And if we go at the three quadrant gate system, you know, we're at almost 2 million, so. Those are kind of the cost figures. Then if you look at some of the maps that I provided in there, if I can just kind of look where they went. So the first one, again, was just basically at Second Avenue Northeast. You can kind of see there, I'm just kind of showing, you know, basically those medians that would go in there. Kind of the recommended length is 100 feet is what they would like to see. So if you can see kind of on the north side of the tracks there, you know, we could easily, I think, get the 100-foot median in there. On the south side, you know, not to affect traffic from Third Street there, we could probably get about a 40-foot median there. That would require approval from Federal Railroad because with the side street adjacent to the tracks, they would like to see a minimum of 60 feet. Anything less than 60 feet, you got to kind of get prior approval. And they would look at it as what they referred to as like an alternative safety measure, so. Then the next drawing, basically now at Central Avenue, on the north side of the tracks there, you know, we could get about 50-foot median in there without affecting traffic too much. So again, may require approval as an alternative safety measure. But then on the south side of the tracks there, we could easily get the 100 feet of median in there that's required, so that would not be a problem. Now, when we get over to Third Street there, basically what we're showing is a three quadrant gate system. So we'd have two gates on what I'm going to call the south side of the tracks and basically just the one gate system on the north side of the tracks. And we'd install basically an 80-foot median there. That would require some traffic flow changes there on the street just to the south side of Sacred Heart. We'd probably end up having to, from about their parking lot area there to Third Street, that would probably turn into a one-way. And we did kind of visit with Punky on that and, you know, he thought, you know, that if that's what needs to be done to keep the intersection open, he thought that was a kind of a feasible option too, so. And then basically, the next drawing is, you know, really no change at Central Avenue, that's the same. There, we are showing a four quadrant gate system. You know, with that system now, basically you'd be able to keep the traffic, the two-way traffic on the south side of Sacred Heart, you'd keep traffic kind of flowing as it does today there. I guess on both probably the three quadrant and the four quadrant system, we would have to do some reconfiguration of that hill street to kind of get the road, everything to come in more perpendicular to the tracks. It also allows us to better, we have better ability as we bring in sidewalk and stuff there too for pedestrian safety improvements. Will kind of work better if we can be a little more perpendicular too, so. So those, I think those three, four drawings are kind of giving you idea of, you know, what improvements would need to be made. I did kind of spell out too, just some of the steps that would be required to establish a quiet zone. As far as funding goes, typically all of these improvements are kind of paid by the city or, you know, the owner requesting the changes. Like I said, BNSF would provide some incentive if we were to look at closing Third Street, they would provide some dollars to help make the improvements at Central and Second. And then I've also reached out to the folks at MINDOT and just kind of asked about, you know, can we use state aid allocation dollars that we receive every year? Can we use those dollars? Or every four years, we do receive federal sub-target dollars too, you know, if we'd be able to utilize those dollars to help pay for these improvements. And at this point, I have not heard back from them, so. I guess with that, I'll open up for questions.
Mr. President, I have two questions.
Yes, Punky. If you want to come up here, Punky.
Governor Walz is supposedly getting more money into state funds for railroad, along railroads. Is there any opportunities there?
I haven't seen what he's proposing there, but.
He earmarked a bunch of money for more than that home.
Okay.
That's one thing. And then I've got this study from August of 2010.
Okay.
And I don't know what this all is exactly.
Did you dig way back in your files, Punky? Do you dig way back in your files or what?
Well, I got all kinds of drawers and stuff. I was gone before this was issued. I got a couple, four drawer filing cabinets at home if you ever need stuff you lost. But it shows on here, the subtotal cost for the base scenario was 320,000. And then the recommended scenario for crossings is 517,000. But that included Grand Forks' stuff.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
You must have one of these.
I haven't seen that one, but.
Well, I don't know how they could miss the mark. I mean, 900,000.
I'm just giving you the information I got.
I understand. Understand.
Punky, would you make that available so we could all get copies of it? It would be helpful.
Sure.
That'd be great. Megan will make up copies for all of us.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll get her that. All right.
He's got it right here.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it for now, but continue on and.
I do have a question while we have you guys here. I think I know the answer, but I'd like to just have it as part of the conversation, Punky. How important is it for you to keep all three of these open for Sacred Heart?
Well, for Sacred Heart, it's important, but I think as a community, it's important. You know, the way we have to drive around this town, you know, trying to explain how to get around. And if you're on the point, you know, we're already choked off when you come downtown. Yeah, we can go east and take Fifth Northeast and we can take Central and, you know, we can drive around. But losing this, it takes you right downtown to the post office and takes you to the light that, my sickies there in Cabela's, I mean, I think traffic flow in this town would be impacted severely. And I'm worried about how it'd impact traffic around our school.
Yeah.
You know, we have almost 400 kids in our school that's coming here and 47% of those kids come from Grand Forks currently.
So I thought of coming and going from your events, coming and going from school.
Right.
It's probably a big deal to keep all of those open.
Well, I think so. I mean, I think we'd have to do some pretty in-depth trafficking studies before we start closing off and I think.
You'll never reopen it once it's closed.
No.
And I think one thing we'd have to confirm with Earl, I just thought about it too, is, you know, again, MPO did the traffic study in 2017, but if they did that in June, July,
Right.
You know, there's no school going on, so that kind of makes a huge difference to him, assuming so.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gressel.
He answered my question I asked. I was going to ask what their feelings would be if we closed Third for a million bucks. I was just.
Well, it's a lot of money.
And it's going to increase that south side because they're going to hit there and have to go there to get anywhere, you know, south side of Sacred Heart School, so, but.
I don't know. We should talk to our public safety people. Would that be important to you to keep that open? Your fire trucks come running from the point up to that town pretty often.
They do.
I don't know. I think the advantage of the central part of town now, listening to those trains, would be pretty important to the residents. Mr. Helms, you were there. Would they like to, not hear the trains at 11 o'clock at night when they're trying to sleep?
You know, I'm going to be honest with you on that.
Don't notice.
Every time, this come up about four and a half years ago and it was voted down because we absolutely didn't want to, I shouldn't say we, but a lot of people on the council did not want to close that street off. Okay. And, but I live about two and a half blocks north of the railroad tracks. And to be honest with you, I don't even hear it until we start talking about this and then I, you know what I mean? I just don't pay attention to it. So I'm far enough away, it doesn't bother me to speak of, but, you know, the ones right on Fourth Street there and whatever, I'm sure it gets quite loud, but for me, it doesn't really.
You miss half a Montseer sermon sometimes on Sundays.
Yeah.
You're disappointed.
I am disappointed. You got to stay awake. Eyes are wide open. Ears are wide open.
Mr. Bell, just today when I was coming over here.
Well, it's undoubtedly a lot of money, but we would not want that closed, no way.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for me, I like the horns because I'm sitting at work and I hear the horn, I'm going, okay to go home now. I got to go this way around instead of the other way around, but that's me. My question for Sacred Heart is if we leave that intersection open, is Sacred Heart willing to contribute any money towards the cost to keep it open? That's a pretty hefty bill. And I think I just got my answer.
Yeah. I'd like you to explain how that paying for to keep something open is in our benefit.
I don't know that it is, so if it isn't, then we'll just close it. But your argument, you're sitting back there arguing that you would really like to keep it open, so if you want to keep it open, is Sacred Heart willing to participate in any of the costs?
In keeping a road open?
Yes.
Because of the money saved to take and put over on Second to make that a quiet zone over there?
Yeah.
Well, maybe a question for the Montseer answer, it isn't for me.
Okay.
I mean, we can discuss that, I guess, but, I mean, what are you looking for? You know, $50,000 or $600,000?
$50,000 is a drop in the bucket.
I think it's probably something that needs to be discussed and to me, it is a lot of money. And I think knowing what the costs are and knowing what the impacts would be, I think that, you know, a lot of these questions, now we know.
Yeah.
And I think that's something that we need to all look at to make sure we're doing the right thing and making sure we're doing the right thing for traffic flow and what's right for that area, so. But Mr. Demers has.
Thank you, Mr. President. Funding and all that stuff is something we should all look into. I'm sure you guys can't, you guys have to talk to a couple of people to see what kind of money you could raise or whatever to come up with that kind of thing. But we also have to think about the effects of closing, closing existing intersections. You know, we dealt with this on Business Highway Two. And as we went through that process, we saw that there was an actual, there's actually damages for businesses and other institutions that are along that road. They looked at it as a taking. So to some extent, yeah, you could say, if you want this, this is a benefit to you if it isn't, but if we do this, it could also be considered a taking. So we have to be wary of both of those. So, but backing up, I think we're not even close to that yet. So backing up to the issue, if it was closed on Third, there would also be, there would be construction needed to close those. Those are in your estimation?
Correct, yeah.
Like another 100,000 or something, or what are we looking at?
Probably another 50,000, I would guess.
50,000? Okay. And you said that the deal with BNSF, if you closed it, would be 50% of all of the construction for the quiet zone or?
No, what they said is they would pay for 50% of the cost to replace the signal system at Second Avenue Northeast, which was, that's which they were estimating, they got 450,000, so they'd basically give us 225,000.
225,000. So that's, that's the benefit of closing.
That's kind of the incentive.
Except for the extra cost of not. But, so if you close that, you'd probably have to extend the fencing, you'd have to probably have some sort of PED crossing or something there as well? I mean, it connects to our trailhead that's right there, right?
Yeah.
So there's probably added costs there. I remember in the old plan, I thought there was, they required fencing on both sides. They don't anymore or?
They just mentioned the school site.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we've included for now.
Has BNSF approved all these designs? Or not approved the designs, but their concept?
They have not even, I mean, that's a. They have not even, I mean, that's another whole process we gotta go through. I mean, we almost gotta get full plans more or less completed to be able to submit it to Federal Railroad for approval.
I guess my concern, the preferred package, to me, seems like it'd be the, the three quadrant system at Third with the one-way, kind of in between Central and Third. Is that, what road is that? Is it named?
Right here?
Yeah.
I don't know, that's why I said the road on the south side.
Okay.
You're talking about the road just off of Sacred Heart?
Yeah.
That's railroad property. We got a permit from the railroad to put that street in there, and so after the flood, when we built our building, Sacred Heart paid for that street.
Well, it's not named? Why don't we name it?
It's not named because it's not a city street. It's railroad property. They allow us to use them.
Okay. Off the topic, I suppose. I would, it seems to me that that would be the best option. I just am curious if they would consider that three quadrant system safe if there's potentially traffic, one-way traffic headed west-ish, which could, I mean, the purpose of the median is to stop people from going around the gates, and I don't know if a bump out would be enough to stop them. Especially in their mind, I mean, they...
Yeah. No, I mean, you're correct.
...dealt with BNSF a few times.
That's one we'd have to kind of get approval from Federal Railroad on. And I, I mean, I could always talk to them and even send them this preliminary sketch and see if they would give us, you know, just some type of feeling as if they think it's good or bad.
I guess, do you need, and then, so, without, with the four quadrant system, you do not need the medians?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess the only other thing I think we should talk about, you know, we talked about, or, you know, Mr. Beauchamp brought up state funding, and I don't know if you're gonna find a ton of earmarks for this specifically, but I know, I would imagine that a project more similar to what Morehead has been doing with their rail and do overpass, underpass type of thing, if we were to revitalize, refresh, dust off our central corridor project or proposal, and try to figure out if we can find another route under or over the track, there may be funding for that type of project. I, you know, I just don't know if this would be something that would raise any eyebrows down at the, at the state capital, but I think that type of a project, that, that would be considerably more expensive. You're probably talking in the 20, 25 million dollar range, but...
Mr. President, we looked at that years ago, and that intersection where East Side Express is, I think it was down about like five feet, or what is it?
She did the grade separation.
Just to get a separation there. And then there was an overpass one, went over the, the Grand Forks Grocery property.
Right.
Part of that, but that was...
I was thinking that.
Very expensive. That went in an angle.
But like you said, Morehead just got 45 million dollars last, two years ago to get a smaller project done for, so, what I'm saying is, is we should be thinking about what that looks like. I mean, it's, it's only gonna become more of a mess down there. I mean, just with the amount of cars and traffic, and as East Grand Forks grows, and as we grow further south, we are, I mean, it's a, it's a safety factor, you know, we're gonna be looking at potentially a 50-foot flood here with multiple bridges shut down and all those type of things. You know, so, as we approach this, we're looking at a $2 million project. If we're looking at a $2 million project that we might have to figure out that we're gonna pay 80% of, maybe, or 50% of, or however much we're gonna have to come up with, we should maybe be looking at 25 million dollar projects that we're gonna get paid for. So, thank you.
Mayor.
As I recall from the last time this came up, this ultimately turns into kind of a three-way negotiation, the city, BNSF, Federal Railroad Administration, and BNSF will have certain standards and parameters that they'll demand and insist on at certain costs. Federal Railroad has their guidelines that you have to comply with, and we on this side saying, would you accept this, would you accept that, a little bit of a lesser, still to their safety standards, but to a lower dollar. But somehow, to even open that negotiation, it sounds like we have to come with a more detailed plan?
Yeah, I, I mean, I know like BNSF, you know, they gave me some, you know, some preliminary numbers, but they said before they would ever work out kind of a detailed estimate, they want to see, you know, more or less a full set of plans. They want to know that the community is committed to the project.
So what would be the cost to get to that threshold? What would you estimate?
I'll get back to you, and I don't really want to even throw out a number right now.
Because that's what we gotta decide right now. Are we willing to pay that dollar to get to that next step, to really kick off that negotiation?
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable? I think that's kind of the moment that we're in, and we don't even know, because it could start to trim a little bit...
Right.
...with these two entities and us negotiating.
Yep.
Mr. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. President. The other thing we need to take in consideration, and this was part of the discussion back four years ago too, is at what point, as you go further east, are we gonna have that quiet zone? You get down by Fifth Avenue Northeast down there, you know, there's residents right along there too and stuff. At what point in time, or how you gonna start that quiet zone down that way? Are we looking, we might be looking a lot more money here than what we're, than this 2 million dollars, just to get by Sacred Heart and whatever. So had, did you check into that at all and see when, how we could do that down there to get the engineers to say, hey, you're getting close to town, don't blow the horn tomorrow, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I mean, my understanding, I guess, going into this from kind of David and stuff, is, I mean, we looked at basically just those, kind of those three intersections. I mean, the further east we go, I mean, we're just gonna incur more costs, because there's gonna have to be some safety improvements at any of those private crossings, you know, stuff like that, so...
Yeah, that's kind of what happened last time, and that's why it kind of ended up dead in the water, if I'm remembering right, because it was like, where do you stop when you keep going, you know, so...
Right.
One, one last thought I have, and, you know, when we talk about doing this, you know, any part of this for one entity such as Sacred Heart, you're doing it for thousands of people, is what, you know, Sacred Heart is thousands of people. It's a big percentage of our city and of Grand Forks, and, and so you're not doing it for one entity, you're doing it for the hearing of all these little kids playing in the playground, and, so it's a lot of people affected, though it happens to be through one facility. So let's really keep our minds open to try to do the right thing for those families involved in that organization.
I'd like to add to what the mayor said. Something we also have to figure out is that if a child gets killed at that intersection, BNSF runs somebody over, they're gonna pay 5 to 10 million and just in a lawsuit. They've got a lot more to go here than just, just this minor cost that they think they're gonna pay. We can't just figure just Sacred Heart in this deal. We have to figure, the postal office is right down the street. How far do we go? They, if we're gonna make one pay, we gotta start taking a look at all the others, the mall, the, there's a lot more people involved here than just Sacred Heart, so...
Anderson.
I have a question as a citizen. Are they gonna go faster through town than like they do in Morehead if they put those quiet zones down?
Good question. I doubt it, but I hope not.
Yeah, as far as I know, the traffic speeds, or the speeds remain the same.
They don't in Grand Forks.
Oh, I knew that, because, is that because they have to slow down because of East Grand Forks?
There are quiet zones there too, though.
I think they have a certain speed limit after...
Because of that curve, I really doubt it. It only goes so fast.
Yeah.
And these numbers that you have in front of us, I mean, are these numbers that you're not, okay, I'm gonna shoot high and show these guys these numbers, and then say, okay, you know what, they came in, or is these are just hard costs for this equipment?
Yeah. And again, I, you know, I don't know where, I guess, the numbers came from necessarily in 2010 or whatever, but all of these railroad improvements, its costs that I've got directly from BNSF engineers, basically, so, I guess for right now, I gotta trust those numbers. You know, they may be a little artificially high, I'm sure they would rather start high too, and then come down a little bit as, as, you know, you kind of refine plans and stuff, but...
A million?
You know, as far as any of the railroad equipment, like I said, I got, I got prices from BNSF. As far as some of the, you know, the media, the supplementary safety measures, the medians, the street improvements type stuff, I mean, that's stuff I've estimated, but...
Anybody else have anything at this time to discuss?
I don't think there's another private crossing, or any crossing, until you get to like the back way into Portimix, so, that's all the way down there.
That would be the first one, I think, yeah.
That's all the way down. I mean...
About floodwater out there?
No, it's like right across from Crystal Sugar.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. And do you think we have steps to take to find out, I mean, maybe reach out to them and say, you know...
Yeah, I'll kind of provide them what I got, just see how much detail...
$2 million project, you gotta say, you know what, we gotta, you know, walk through this, we can't run through it, and...
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. President's call for your consideration.
All right. Number three, request for direction in R22 phase-out pet arenas. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get rolling, does anybody want to see a PowerPoint on the screen? Are you good on your paper copies? Good on paper? I have a few copies here if anybody needs one, if they want to grab one. The print is small, though, I warned you of that. So, just a quick summary, kind of get us all updated again, since we have a few new council members. A couple of years ago, I went through with those members that are still from that council a few years ago, I went through a lot of this to kind of give you a, paint a picture of what our current arenas are like, and with the impending phase-out of R22, which is refrigerant that is used to run the compressor systems to make the artificial ice in both the Civic Center and in the VFW arena. A few years ago, the EPA signed it, and was signed by President Obama at the time, a United States Clean Air Act, that asked for the discontinuation of the, the sale, importation, production of R22, HCFC22 is kind of the scientific name of it. So starting on January 1st, 2020, that refrigerant will no longer be able to be produced or imported into the United States. And that's refrigerant that we have in the Civic Center. It runs the compressor in what's called an indirect system. There's about 400 pounds of R22 in that system. And at the VFW arena, it's a direct-cooled system, which means there's anywhere between 4,000 and 5,000 pounds of R22 in it. And with the discontinuation of it, it's ultimately led to a substantial rise in the cost of buying the refrigerant. Should we ever have a leak, or if we need to make a repair on a system, or if we need to add a charge for the summer months instead of the winter months, all of those different aspects can add to, or create a time where we may need to add refrigerant to our system. The most recent price check that I did on, on the refrigerant, it was running or selling at about 20 pounds, $20 a pound. As recently as about a year ago, it was $40 a pound. In 2013, it was about $13 a pound. So it's really fluctuated. Nobody in the refrigeration world has an idea really in what the cost of that is going to do in the future. It may skyrocket way up again. There's a potential that as more and more commercial refrigeration companies start to transition away from R22 as they update their systems, and that refrigerant that's being used in those systems can be recovered and recycled to be resold. There's potential that the cost will continue to come down from the $40 a pound it was a few years ago to the 20 it was today. It may come down a little more, but it's gonna be a very volatile market as far as the cost of that refrigeration is. The other part of it that I think is important, and I think probably the most important part of it as far as our arenas are concerned, is that now that refrigeration companies know that this refrigerant can no longer be produced, and it can no longer be imported, it's a, it's a system that people are gonna start to go away from, which means that the parts within the compressor systems, within the ice systems themselves, are gonna become less and less available. And as we have breakdowns, or we need to overhaul engines, or any of those types of things, the cost for maintenance on those systems is gonna skyrocket as well. We've already seen that in the VFW arena, the compressor, the ice system that's in there. It was installed, used in 1997 following the flood, and we, when we had Simco Refrigeration come in about a year and a half ago and do a review of these arenas, they told us in that review that our system was close to obsolete when it was installed in our, in our arena. So it's now 20 years obsolete. We've still been able to get parts made, special order made, to be able to overhaul the, the engine when we needed to, but we overhauled one compressor there in the last, in, between 2017 and 2018, we spent time overhauling one compressor of the double package that's there, and we spent about $50,000 to rebuild that. In comparison, today's price to order the parts to overhaul one of the compressors at the Civic Center is about $4,000. Now, that system also, it's still available today, but in the next year or two, it'll become unavailable. And we'll be in the same boat with that, that those parts will most likely, if we can get them at all, they will have to be specially made to, to be able to maintain the ice system within the Civic Center. So we're kind of at a, an area, I think, within those two arenas specifically, that we know the maintenance costs are just gonna continue to go up to be able to, to fix or overhaul or maintain. They recommend that an engine used in those settings is overhauled every 10,000 operating hours. That's about three and a half ice seasons, three and a half to four ice seasons at the, at the rate that we run them. So, by the, by the next time they're scheduled for overhaul again, parts may be difficult to find or may be very inflated in cost. Just as long as I have the presentation in front of you and kind of run through a few things, the Blue Line Arena, just so that we're, we're aware on that, the refrigerant that's in the Blue Line Arena is an R404A, it's called. It's on the EPA's hit list as one that, starting in the year 2020, you can never, you can no longer install a new refrigeration system that has R404A in it. But it's not been one that has been restricted from production or importation at this time, so we can still get it. We had to, in a repair we did early this season, we had to put some in it, and it was about $20 a pound to buy that refrigerant too. So the cost of that has risen to be very similar to R22 already, just by fact that it's on the hit list. So going through the presentation, I don't think I'll hit on every bullet point, but when we had Simco Refrigeration come in, they did a really nice job, I thought, in summarizing some bullet points in, in each of the arenas in maybe some short-term solutions to be able to make our systems run more efficiently and hopefully buy more time with them, to get more years out of them. And they also provided some numbers, some preliminary estimates on what it would cost to, to replace. So running through the replacement side of it, the Civic Center being the first one we'll talk about, that one, the floor itself was replaced in 1993, and it's a, it's an indirect floor, so it's a glycol-based brine that runs through the ice slab, and then the R22 cools that glycol to cool the, to cool the ice, actually. So it is possible that the floor that's there could be, continue to be used with a new refrigeration package. So that would be some cost savings in that. But the negative that we have with the Civic Center is that due to the age of the building and the location of the mechanical room being underneath the bleachers and kind of in the basement of the arena, it's not to today's code with the proper ventilation and leak detection and emergency exits that it all should have. So if we do anything new, we may be able to reuse the floor, but there will have to be some sort of add-on to the building with an external refrigeration package that would provide all the proper up-to-date codes, venting, leak detection, and so forth. So the price tag, the price estimate from Simco, and it's the only place we've gotten just a preliminary number from for the Civic Center, is 1.4 million dollars to replace that refrigeration system. The VFW arena, that one, as I mentioned before, is a... The VFW arena, that one, as I mentioned before, is a direct-cooled floor. That means that the R twenty-two is directly pumped through the steel pipes, running through the concrete floor to make the ice. Means there's a lot more R twenty-two. It's also been found that that system, in the time that it was installed, was the most efficient and the best way to make ice at that time, forty years ago when it was first put in. And today, it still produces a very high-quality sheet of ice from a use standpoint. But we're very lucky that we haven't had any issues with leaks in the piping as it stands. Other communities that have had R twenty-two direct floors similar to ours for much less time have had multiple leaks through a season within their ice slab, where the pipes, the steel piping gets corroded from the R twenty-two running through it. And then you're almost like it's, you're chasing a little bit of a needle in a haystack and trying to find the leak and being able to safely replace it or fix it and not lose your ice sheet in the process if it happened during the season. The estimated lifespan that these companies have placed on an R twenty-two floor is twenty-five years, and ours is still original, so we're thirty-seven years into that floor. With, from conversations I've had with past employees and current employees, we've had one leak there in the existence of the building, and it was able to be found and fixed relatively easily. A community like Alexandria, Alexandria just replaced their R twenty-two system last summer, and they had essentially stopped counting how many times they had fixed leaks, and they had gotten to the point that they were so good at it, they could find a leak, remove the ice, break the concrete, and fix it within hours and get their ice back up and running, and so that they didn't have a huge loss or a gap in space and time. So, I think we're very fortunate in that. Whoever did the install and the community project put that together, did an incredible job. Obviously, was very careful in the style of piping they used and the welding to be able to make it last the way it did. But it is at a point that when we need to replace that system, that entire ice slab, that floor will have to get replaced at the same time, because it can't, that piping can't be retrofitted to a newer refrigeration system. So, the price estimate for that building, because of the floor install, it's increased even more, it's about two point two million, was the most recent price estimate I had for it. So, and then I listed two, I think, which all are important aspects to this conversation that I hope we can start to have about the ice arenas and trying to find some direction on where we should go, is in the VFW arena, we've recognized, in the Civic Center's case, we've put a lot of work into the infrastructure of the building in recent years with many recent projects and updated fire alarm systems and facelifts to lighting and heating and so forth. The VFW arena, we really haven't done much of that. We have a building that the boilers are in need of replacement. The main, the roof over the building, we had some minor leaking earlier this winter in December when the temps were really warm, and we had a roofing company go up there, and they basically commented that this spring, we need to take a really good review of the roof to find out if it maybe just needs the screws and the rubber washers across the whole thing to be, need to be replaced, or if it's even worse than that, because it's to a point that there's rusting in areas on the roof. So, the signage we have in our budget, our capital improvement plan for this year to get the sign replaced, the old neon sign outside, none of the lighting works on it anymore. So, there's kind of a laundry list, so to speak, of some deferred maintenance within that building that's not related to the ice system itself, that I think as we start to have this conversation about potential costs, should all be included, so we can have, I hope you can give our department a strategy and the city a strategy for what should we be putting money into and the timing of those types of fixes. If we're gonna do something with refrigeration system in the next year or two, do we wanna focus on signage right away? Or, you know, what are, what's important and what's our priority as all the dollars kind of fit? So, just to make everybody aware of that. So, that's kind of where I think we're, I'll leave it a little bit, you know, looking at what some of the other communities have done. We obviously have a huge cost in front of us. I know that the, in Brookings, South Dakota, they have a fifteen, sixteen-year-old building, the Larson Ice Center, that they had a direct R twenty-two cooling tube sheets. They just approved replacing that system with a ammonia-based system, and they, the they accepted a bid of three point seven million to do that work for two sheets of ice. Now, that's in one building, and the same package cools two sheets of ice. St. Michael Albertville opened a new arena this fall, or sometime this season, they connected it to a current building, the price estimate, to build a new building next to an already standing building and have the refrigeration package run both, was just short of ten million dollars. So, it's kind of, it's, the price tags are a little bit all over the place in where we go. I know that in, in just reviewing what other communities have done and how they've gone through it, is, in a lot of cases, it seems like the first steps they've taken is contracted with an architectural or an engineering company to have a building study done that could produce a report that could tell us a true cost of any deferred maintenance that we have, what's the cost to get that up to date? If we have code issues, what's the cost to get our codes up to date? What's the estimate for the refrigeration? All, you know, to kind of have a conglomerate of all of that and be able to put a feasibility report together. I don't know what cost comes with, I haven't made a call to ask what cost comes with potentially doing that, but just, I think for me, from the side of the refrigeration standpoint, and I had the Parks and Recreation Commission members that could be here come tonight too, because we talked about it at a recent Park and Rec Commission meeting, just looking for any thought or direction on where we go, to be able to try to start down the road, recognizing that whether it's a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, or beyond, we know if we're gonna continue to maintain high-quality ice arenas, we're gonna have to put some attention into the, into what we have. And then just before I ask it for any questions, I did have a couple of the Blue Line Club members come as well, just so that they could hear anything that goes on and any thought process you may all have. At the last Blue Line Club meeting, was it last week or two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, they voiced an interest in putting some money into the buildings as well to look at training, some sort of a training center that could be hockey-specific. There's a lot of communities in our area that have built, built hockey-specific dry land training facilities, and they're asking about options to be able to do that. So, I thought, rather than having separate conversations, it'd be best to try to get everybody together and get everybody on the same page. So, any questions?
Mr. Grassl.
I don't have questions. I don't have any questions, I just have, I have a statement. So, if you think back, two, three years ago, as a council, we met, came up with that strategic plan, somewhat of a strategic plan, and part of that was we knew that this was coming, we knew that we were gonna have issues with our buildings. And one of those things that came out of that was taking and probably eliminating the VFW arena as a ice arena and repurposing that as a different form of facility in our Park and Rec Department. Then taking that and taking and moving and putting another sheet of ice next to the Civic Center. I know that we've talked about that at the Park Board meeting, which would allow us to then take the compressors from the basement of the Civic Center, put a new compressor system in, get that upstairs, get that to code, would allow us to add desperately needed new locker rooms, not only on, you know, on the Civic Center side, if you're, if you get down in those, for those youth kids and down in there, to maybe move them to the opposite side, to the west side of the Civic Center and add on to that, which would then allow the Blue Line Club's idea of trying to develop something and maybe possibly working with an outside entity to create a system of, you know, a training facility there as well. I think it's something that we as a group really need to put some thought into. I know that, you know, I've talked to Mr. DeMurs about it a little bit and Mark Two as well, but just a thought process, I think, to moving forward, it makes no sense in dumping two point two million in one place, one point four million in another place, where we could, we could actually really do a major upgrade to one facility and probably have to put some money into the other facility, but make that a more usable space for everybody in our community. So, that's kind of where I'm sitting, I think Mr. Riappel is in the same spot. The one piece that I think we really are worried about is if we're going to do this, we need to make sure we get on top of it now so we can start making some moves for, raising some money, letting the groups know that we're all in and so they can help raise some money. Maybe look for somebody, a private group out there that possibly would be interested in naming rights to the facility, to the whole nine yards. I think that's something that, that the Park Board group is really willing to work on. And so, I'm hoping that we can come at this as a group, as a council, with an, with a open mind to approving our facilities in East Grand Forks.
Mr. Riappel. This is from a fundraising end. I've been involved in several rinks that we've fundraised for. It's a year and a half to two-year process just on the fundraising end. And during that time, you have to have a plan as to what you're gonna do. So, we have to first decide, are we gonna have two rinks up here and use the VFW for a indoor soccer, indoor football, practice area, all that other stuff, track? Once we make that decision, then we have to start the fundraising, and that's a, that's a major undertaking. It's not gonna be just the city involved here, we have to get everybody involved. And when he talks about naming rights, where, could be for the building, could be for the locker rooms, could be for a community room, there's a lot of different things that you can put in there. So, we have to make the decision first to find a, get a group together to start with, not just the council, but all the entities involved, school district, Blue Line Club, figure skating, list goes on, there's a bunch more we can get involved too. Then we have to decide on, okay, who we're gonna have for a contractor, if we're gonna do it, who's the engineer, and then they have to come up with something for us. So, there's a lot of little steps, but first we have to decide here, what's our best way to go? Dump two point two into the one, or put it on the other and have one compressor system that can run both rinks with maybe a backup there too?
I guess, I like this conversation, I think it's a good one. Certainly, what you've proposed is among the options, and I like your, the way even that you request that we keep an open mind to that as a possibility. It would be a shame to put maybe three or four or five million dollars into these ice rinks and come out basically as we are, just with updated plants. I mean, that's a big deal to get these plants updated, but at this moment where we could put three, four, or five million dollars into it, that is the time to come out better, to actually be intentional about where you have your ice sheets and whether it's changes in locker rooms again, or like you said, for code, bringing the cooling plant up and outside, that's the time to do all of that and actually come out in a better place, not just, yeah, we're essentially doing the same thing we always have done, but we've spent five million dollars to do it. So, I think this is a good time to consider all options.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President. How much have you spent on these arenas the last couple of years? Do you have any idea, just a guesstimate?
In money?
In money?
The last, well, seventeen and eighteen, just a guess off the top of my head, on maintenance at the VFW arena alone, it's about fifty to sixty thousand dollars we put into it. We put, I suppose, I suppose twenty-five thousand into the Civic Center and building maintenance last year.
Okay. How much, how much of this R twenty-two do you have on hand right now?
Very little, less than a thousand pounds.
Because if you had a major problem there right now, tomorrow, you'd have to have six, seven thousand pounds of Freon on hand to take care of that.
Yeah, yeah.
That, and the cost last week, I checked on R twenty-two is eleven sixty-three.
Okay.
So, it does fluctuate up and down, and I knew that. The other thing you can do to make a little money at that whole deal, if it, depending on how you do this, but recycle that R twenty-two, because it's gonna do nothing but go up, and there's gonna be people looking for it. It's gonna hit forty, fifty, sixty dollars a pound, so you can recoup some money that way. There's all kinds of different things you can do here, but one Mr. Grassl saying too, I think that's maybe something that we should be looking at with the fact that these buildings are getting old. And, you know, let's face it, the city hasn't done a real good job of, of building maintenance over the years. I mean, they've gotten better the last couple of years, but before that, you know, they really had no budget in there for maintenance or anything, and they're kind of starting to get that all built back up and get it back to where it should be. But, so, that might be something to look at, because, you know, like you said, what do you put into these buildings in the last couple of years? You know, if you do that every couple of years, it don't take long to get a building, you know? And if you have to buy six, seven thousand dollars, or six, seven thousand pounds of Freon, you know, you're looking at a chunk of change there. And actually, I would recommend that you maybe even look into getting some of that so you have it, because if, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow, and if you have trouble tomorrow, wouldn't hurt to have that sitting on hand, it don't go bad.
Right, absolutely.
When it hits a low point, if it's that volatile, when it hits a low point, maybe pick some up.
Yeah, that's the key to that in purchasing it, is, we talked at the end of last year, Carla and I talked a lot about the price and where we were at in the budget and being able to get some, but it's, it's amazing, and even from week to week, when you call what the prices can be and how different they can be. So, whenever we find it for eleven sixty-three a pound, that's worth buying it for sure.
It does change, all that Freon does, it doesn't matter what, if it's twenty-two, if it's four oh four, if it's one thirty-four, it's just the way it is. Depends on what, you know, the market tomorrow, so. So, it might be worth looking into to check on getting some so you have it, because, like I said, it's a lot of money to spend, but you can recoup that back. You're not gonna lose anything on it if you don't use it, that's for sure.
If I could also, just for clarification, when we talk about maybe repurposing the VFW, the blue line stays an ice sheet, right? You're not saying take all the ice off the point? It would be to keep that for a lot of practices and whatnot, yeah.
Use is what it is.
Yeah, it's awfully nice for, for the neighborhoods and kids down there for open skating and stuff to have a sheet down on that end too.
Mr. Grassl.
Another thing that just came to my mind, so if you think about the back of the Civic Center, and every year around graduation time, it seems to rain like five, six inches that day. So, you know, we have had some flooding issues during graduation. I think we could also, if we upgrade, maybe look at different ways of entering that building as well and fixing that area in the back, taking away maybe that side and coming in from the west along with that addition or something to that effect. And then that would eliminate the, or the locker rooms to the east, which it'll be interesting to see what happens now in the next month as we start to unthaw. Those seem to have a tendency to fill up with water along that east side too. So, I think we could do lots of things that could benefit, that we're spending lots of extra time in, maintenance-wise and man-wise time. I think it's just something I think we need to, again, like I said, really take a good, hard look at, because I think it's definitely, definitely needed, and which also then would help solve maybe part of our parking lot issues. Maybe at that time, we could do it all at one shot. We all know that the parking lot over there is a mess, so.
You want to address Mr. Grassl's?
Yeah, I could, just to add on to Mr. Grassl's comments, I think that's, he made a good point in the building and kind of the, that lower-level Zamboni entrance, it reminded me of a few things I didn't bring up, but there's, even within, if you read the report that Simcoe put, they touched on it a little bit. We've had other, other engineers or architects do energy studies in the past that hit on it, but there are a number of areas within the arenas that, that were, I think we spend way more money running the ice arena because we run it to nineteen seventy or nineteen eighty standards than what we would if we were able to take comprehensive look at how arenas are organized today and be able to retrofit some of those things. One of the- One of the, the very easy one that's evident, if you ever want to come to the Civic Center and look, when you, when you see right now where the Zamboni dumps the snow, they just dump it onto a concrete floor and we use hot water if we need to melt it in a hurry in a busy day. We have to run hot water to spray over top of the snow to get the snow to melt and to drain away. That was the only way that they did it in the seventies to melt snow, or they drive the Zamboni outside and dump outside. At the VFW arena, we drive outside and dump outside. We're not supposed to be doing that anymore, but it's the only alternative we have right now. So newer arenas have snow melt pits that you go and dump into a hot water bath, and that hot water bath is heated by reclaimed heat off of the compressor system. So it's essentially, you're not using twice the energy to melt the snow. You're using energy you're reclaiming to do it. I think there's, there are just, there's a laundry list of items like that, that if we could look at a, at a way to have somebody be able to come in, or maybe it's pull out the old energy studies that we've had done in the past and look a little closer at them and figure out, you know, what, what are all the things that we're missing within our arenas now that could get us up to be able to run more efficiently and run cheaper in the long run, get us up to date on it all? That's, I guess that's the, the, the direction I'm looking for from all of you. If I can lead you a direction is, is what do we need to do to be able to get some of those answers and start taking the next step?
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I don't have a lot to add. Just want to, I guess, publicly, you know, stand with, with Mr. Grassl's comments that this is something that we discussed and that seems to make sense. You'll kind of notice a little bit of a theme. You know, we talk about the quiet zone. We talk about these little things, but sometimes you need to think bigger. And I think same, same thing with what Chad was proposing is, you know, we can look at all these little tiny things that add up to a lot of real money, but in the end, does it get us better than what we, where we were before? I think this is a great opportunity. You know, we, we do have a big bill in front of us, a lot of challenges, but it's a great opportunity to think about what do we want? You know, and already, this is a great reason why we have this Park Board meeting. You know, this is, this is our opportunity to say, this is what we want. We already heard, you know, we want, you know, some sort of acceleration programs or maybe facilities for that type of thing. It is important, and if we can figure out what we want exactly, I don't, I don't think that going out and finding the funding is the hard part. It's figuring out what we want and going after, and putting it together and, and doing it. And I think, you know, you've got a lot of people back here. We've got a lot of people in the community that support this type of things. And I think the best opportunity we have is to broaden it as wide as we can. You know, we talk about hockey, but we also talk about figure skating. We talk about, you know, if you, if you repurpose the VFW, you can do indoor soccer. You could do, you know, some sort of, you can expand the, the health center facilities in there. You can do all kinds of things, and the more people you bring into this tent, the better opportunity we have, you know, to do it. And I, like I said, I think, you know, I think I shocked Chad, the first time I talked about it, I was like, maybe we just tear them all down and build one big one or whatever, but I don't think we need to go that drastic. You know, I think, you know, his, his idea of, you know, just adding, adding one sheet near or connected to the Civic, it is important to have those, that number of sheets because, you know, it brings in tournaments, it brings, we just have that many users too. So like I said, I'm, I'm fully on board with some sort of a, a master plan that brings everything into, as much into one location as, as one, an exercise in efficiency, and two, as a betterment to what we can offer. I think that's by far the best way to go. You know, there's, there's a lot more than just the facility. We've got parking over there that needs help. We need, you know, there's a lot of stuff that needs help over at the VFW, and not that we would just abandon it, but, you know, if you repurpose it, you can save some of that money, reshuffle. Any idea what, I mean, are we talking like a four million dollar building for a new sheet of ice near? I mean, there's no way to tell.
Just as an idea, the Icon rinks originally started out at six point five.
And that's two?
Yep, but they ended up at ten point five.
Right, but they also have the ability to add.
Added their addition in there.
Right.
You could probably do a single rink, four hundred seat, one side probably for, my guess, maybe three and a half, four million.
Right, and that's where I was thinking, you know, around that four million dollar.
I think that would be like, amazing.
Might be like, yep.
Well, here, just in the time Icon was built, West Fargo did one pretty much a mirror image. Not as nice as Icon, and that one was twenty-two, and that was built three years later. You know, so I mean, it's, to gauge off, the Icon one is a good one to gauge off of because it's a close one. Everybody knows it, but that's how costs have escalated, just as anything else has escalated in the last quarter.
So when you read your two thousand and ten Quiet Zone report and you see five hundred thousand, that's why it's four hundred and fifty thousand for each crossing, but.
I mean, a realistic number in this scenario, again, would be probably in that six to ten, if you were going to do it and make it a rink that.
Spending all your locker rooms and everything else, what your penalties are going to be?
That's, the one that I referenced, that St. Michael Albertville add-on arena, that's, they built a seven hundred and fifty-seat arena connected to their already existing, and it looks a lot like one of Icons does, and it was ten million last summer they worked on it.
And I, I guess my point, my overall point is, is we spend our money, we budget our money on our priorities, and this should be a priority, you know? We're, we can see it's going to be, we're going to have snow on the ground until April. We're, we're a northern community, you know, in a hockey state, a skating state, a winter state. Unless we provide opportunities for activities for kids, I would, I mean, I think we should, we've discussed, we should expand those opportunities to, you know, adults and, and seniors and all those other types of things as much as we can. But the more opportunities we give them to be active and participate, I mean, not to pick up any scabs or anything, but I think it's more effective than any police dog or any of those things for, you know, crime deterrence, drug, you know, usage, all those type of things. Being part of activities, being a part of our community is, should be one of our top priorities. And I think this is somewhere that we should spend our money to make that a priority.
Mr. Grassl.
So, so would anybody balk at the idea if we sent Reed out with a possibility of coming back to us with trying to find what it would, you know, some, just some preliminary numbers on, you know, what it would take to build, you know, a building with eight new locker rooms with, and just kind of get a comprehensive study is what I'm, what I'm thinking. That way we can kind of understand where we're going to sit with everything. He then can report back out to groups to let them under, you know, know this is where we're headed. Kind of gives us an idea of where we all are going to sit and just kind of move forward from there. Does that make sense?
I would, there may be a step before, we may need to put out some sort of a, you know, request for even just that proposal. Like, we might need to weigh through prospective people before, I mean, that's a pretty big, even a preliminary thing.
But I mean, to get the ball moving, I think we need to, let's get it going.
Right, but if we want to spend, you know, some money to try to find.
You're asking for a little bid on the project to give us an idea, different companies.
Right, yeah, they could put together different proposals if they want, I suppose, but.
Were you even thinking that far ahead to start a bid process or just a concept?
I was thinking more on, on the concept of, you know, because, you know, we have an idea, but we haven't talked, I mean, what does the blue line have for what, you know, what they might be able to do for the figure skating or whatever other group might say, hey, I'd like to come in and, you know, we would like to put this in here and have our name put on it. I mean, I don't know, but we would need to, I'm just looking for a preliminary number that isn't going to be like someone comes in with sticker shock, so.
And I think, it sounds weird, but I think the sooner we can come with a concept, a visual concept of what it would look like either outside or inside, and then with some narrative about, you know, what happens in the community when we bring this all together. What, what opportunities does that open up for some hockey-related fitness activity or a little place for parents to gather or fans of the hockey team, you know, that even more of an opportunity for that than we have now? That's the kind of concept that I think turns into a big plus for fundraising.
Or do we just put this in the hands of, of the, of the Park Board or our Park Group to go forward and then come back in the near future?
Are they spending money to do this or are they just doing this? What's going to be?
Well, that's, that's the, that's the deal. I mean, we're going to need to know, do we have the blessing to find, to be able to, no one's going to do it for free.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's the problem.
I know we got a couple more people that want to talk, but can we find out what it would cost to do the study and then go, okay, this, this group says it's going to cost fifteen thousand to do this. The other one says twenty-five, just to tell us what it's going to cost to build this thing. Is that where we want to start?
That's what I think, is you want to find that group, that's, you know, because in the, in the past when we did our pool, I mean, we hired a group that started at that conceptual level, and at the end product of that was, well, these are your, your totals. So that's, you need to find that group first.
So I have Keith, do you want to address?
You were talking numbers. Kirkston's facility was fifteen point six million dollars. Ten million came from the bonding bill. Three point six million was raised. The help number, the help made is a good one. Northwest Minnesota Foundation was the one they solicited to help with fundraising. It takes a couple of years. And so that's eight, ten years ago, so your ice skating is going up.
That's three rinks, right?
That's three rinks, and so that project took three to four years.
Is one of their three a big one with lots of seating?
Yes.
Yeah, so this one should be scaled down from that, right? So we're not trying to replace the Civic. We're coming with a nice sheet with some seating adjacent to it.
And there was tax credits, we had two million dollars tax credits, so.
Mr. Better.
Thank you. Including the cost, you're going to spend another two to three thousand to repurpose the VFW. We need to keep that in mind there also. When we did the pool, I think Mr. Demers was a big advocate of it with the sales tax. We weren't thinking broad enough with our sales tax, and by the time this project comes up, the sales tax for the pool, we gone, and that'd be an opportunity then to do, like Mr. Demers was saying, let's have a big comprehensive plan for the sales tax that might be a great funding source for a project like this, so.
It's a great idea.
Anything else, Mr. Better?
No, that's it.
I know Mr. Grassl did talk to me a while ago off and on, and I've talked to other members, and I've talked to Reed, and when the advisory board came on, that was one of my biggest pushes with him, is talking with him, is finding out what we wanted to do and how we wanted to approach it, and what groups needed to be at the table to decide what this community needed, wanted, or, you know, what is going to be there. And I think that, you know, we're starting to move in that direction, which I'm glad because we need to really find out what we want these buildings to look like and what we need to have in there for what we want our community to look like and to have offer to, you know, use it and what goes on. So I think getting an understanding what, like we did with the pool, we had a study done. We had people come in and did interviews with different groups, you know, schools. I mean, they weren't met with kids. They met with, you know, senior center, you know, and met with, you know, different citizens. So I don't know if that's something you want to look at, but that, that was a comprehensive study, and that, I don't remember what the cost was on that, but that gave us options in saying, okay, this, if this is in there, this is what it's going to cost you. If this is in there, this is what it'll cost you. So, you know, we went through that process, and I think it was a great process because we got to understand what, if we want the, this type or this type, I mean, there's different things in between, and you know what's going to cost us. And then we can go, okay, you know what, this is what we want to do. This is what we're going to have to fund. So I think that's where we need to go, but. Do you have any, yes, sir?
Just a question, obviously, being a hockey parent and on the Blue Line Club, I'm actually excited about what I'm hearing. My question is, I guess the reason we were here, or one of the reasons was because we were talking about training facility, and we talked about doing that VFW at one point, the Blue Line Club Arena. And obviously with this new kind of game plan, it changes obviously our focus, so to speak, but it is something that, that we need for our kids, and that's why we, you know, we as a Blue Line Club, we're going to try to step up and create that opportunity for them. But, you know, knowing what we know now, obviously we're trying to put it in the backburner. But my question is, you know, like, something like this, never been involved with, how long, you know, and how urgent, at least to try to find out if we're going to go this route, right? You know, if you, if you come back and it's two years and you say, well, we get our study back, is it two years? Is it two months? Is it, you know what I mean? To try to find out which way we are going to go if we're not going to build another rink, you know what I mean? And we are just going to keep the VFW and put two million into it so that we can hopefully decide and work with the city as well, because obviously we'll need your approval to figure out which way we want to go and with a training facility for the, for the kids. So I guess the, the question is, how fast does this process work? I know the rink isn't going to be built tomorrow, but knowing what direction we're headed.
I remember the process, what the study had done. I think it was closest, almost six months. I think, it's shooting in the dark, yeah, but I think that's what it was from start to them coming and meeting to find out what their direction was to getting, meeting with everybody and giving us a report. I think that's kind of the timeline we had, so.
At that point, does the council then evaluate everything, obviously, and then vote on, or, okay, this is the direction we're going to go?
Right, and that's where we did, yep.
I think I would shoot for some sort of process, like you said, six to nine month, you know, consultant process, and then at the end of then, that, you would have some sort of resolution that says, this is our goal. What I was wondering is, what, are we two years in, or how far into the sales tax are we?
Carla?
We have a year right now on the sales tax. We've collected about eight hundred thousand. To keep in mind, we have to, I believe that you have to wait a year after the sales tax is completed for this ring pool, and we have to come to a vote again, a public vote, and then it took almost a year to start, so.
So, but I'm, so we've got.
We have about a year and a half left to pay off the pool.
Oh, only a year and a half left?
Yes.
Oh, I thought this.
So that would be like two and a half, and then you have to have a vote, so.
So you're telling, you'd probably have a new, if, on that timeline, you would have a new facility within four years, if everything went and everybody wanted to, not a new facility, but you could implement the plan within four years, I guess?
If everything goes right, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, I guess I would start looking at a consultant. Question for you on the, like, on the acceleration or that, you know, the developmental stuff, is it, does it need to be strictly, you know, hockey-related, or can it be part of a broader facility, you know? Like, can you have like a, a fitness center, but then have certain areas for those type of dry land training and stuff, or is it need to be a separate?
Well, basically, I mean, there's, there's many different types, right? I mean, right now up at the high school, or at the high school, at the, at the arena, they have a gym upstairs where the high school team works out. I know Coach Pomassino is, is, he would like to move it, but I, and I spoke with him about, I heard the rumor about possibly, you know, going in a direction and shutting down the VFW, so he would like to move that facility downstairs, but, you know, that probably won't happen. But, so you're having, you have weight training in there, so to speak, but they're also included in these. There's a lot of shooting, there's nets, there's artificial ice, there's, you know, like, stuff too for goaltenders and stuff like that. When you're talking hockey specific stuff.
Right.
So, yes, you can work out in there, but at the same time, kids will have skates on if you're going to do it, you know, do it the right way. Kids will have skates on, be able to shoot, take face-offs, just many different types of things in that particular room.
Right. I just think, I mean, this, the VFW is a big building, and we want to, I mean, we could use it for a. mean, we could use it for a lot of, lot of things.
If I can interrupt here, I mean, we all see the snow, but you got a lot of kids that are starting softball, you're starting baseball, you're starting soccer.
That's my point, is-
They got no place to go right now, except for in a, in a gym here in there, which isn't best for a gym, but, you know, plus it's keeping my knees up and things like that. So they're limited on what they can do just because of what's around.
From the Blue Line's perspective, one of the reasons, you know, we talked, Reed had the study done on, on the different arenas. And from our decision point, what we need to know, yes, we need to know which direction you guys are moving, but we also need to know, you look at the data that you got right now, if you're gonna say the Blue Line Club's staying and staying open, we might move that direction on the Blue Line Club, talking about planning and doing something, coming back to you guys. 'Cause we're ready to move, we have, we have some different funds that we have to spend. I shouldn't tell you that we have to spend it, but we have to spend it. And, and we're willing to move and we wanna get that in front of you guys as soon as possible. So the last thing we want is, you know, a year down the road, and we're gonna close that. So if you guys are able to tell us at some point, we're moving this direction on this study, we think we're possibly gonna go this way, we don't know, but you know what, the Blue Line Club Arena's staying open, then we can, we can kinda justify it from there. And in addition, work with you guys as, as you move forward and into a study or what have you.
What's our field turf situation?
Well, that, that's, that's the other-
Right. But I mean, it's, we didn't purchase it, right?
No, we haven't purchased it. And that's, the reason is because of this. We didn't wanna purchase turf for a building that wasn't gonna be around three or four years from now.
Or configured differently or done, okay.
Yeah, 'cause once you order that, you ordered for a specific size.
Right, that's what I was wondering, I mean-
We have three different ice sheets that are all three different sizes, so.
It'd make it a lot easier to fit if it was a rectangle or, you know, you didn't have to fit it inside of hockey boards.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything to add that's here?
Just food for, food for thought coming from the Blue Line's perspective is, one of our key goals is to try to bring more teams into the community, not only for the youth of our community, but we're trying to have a goal to bring tournaments into the community. You know, our teams go all around Minnesota. We wanna bring people back to East Grand Forks, you know, vitalize that economy. Now you guys making a decision such as this, hey, let's move forward, let's look at these different ice sheets. And council member, Demers hit it, hit it right on the nail on the head when he said, there's, there's a key opportunity here. And I think it's not only opportunity for our citizens and our youth, but it's also bringing, you know, revitalizing or bringing more to the economy and the city, so.
We're also gonna need a lot more of that money that you have to spend.
It's not much, it's not much, it's not a lot, so get busy.
Reed, do you need anything else for us on that? No, I think I have my direction. We can move forward from there. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate everybody's comments. It's a good discussion. Move on to number four, discussion on LeFave Park and Red River Boat Landing. Reed? Thanks, everybody for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you again, Mr. President. This one is kinda along the same lines as the ice arena conversation, but related to, what prompted it is relating back to the, the opportunity to apply for the governor's fishing opener. And we recognize that specifically the boat landing that accesses the Red River needs a lot of work. It's, it's very busy in the summer with boats launching there for the catfish, catfishing leagues on the weeknights, a couple of really big tournaments between the Cats Incredible and the Shields Boundary Battle that launch out of there. So I think it's a, it's a vital part of our community in the summer months to be able to provide a ramp and a landing that, that is safe for people to put their boats in. And the concrete that's in the current one is deteriorating very quickly, to the point that there's rebar sticking through the concrete in certain areas when they back there, when they launch their boats from it. So that's kind of a prompts list. The other part of it that prompts it is that the Red Lake River Corridor project that we've talked about numerous times, and Mr. Demers has been a part of that task force, we've applied for funding, we applied for some small projects through that funding source last summer. And that, the, the projects that we applied for were small ones, like getting a couple of kayak launches and doing some landscaping-type projects within the greenway. And we were recommended for funding on those. And that would have to be approved at this year's legislative session. But with the way, looking at the historical approach of the way that the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission has funded projects is, once they start funding a specific project, they like to see it through to the end. And so if, I think that we have an opportunity from that funding source to strike while the iron's hot, so to speak, in that we haven't applied for much funding from them yet, in that we, we applied for, I think it was about an eighty thousand dollar total project last year, within twenty-five percent of that would be matched locally, the rest would be funded by the, the legacy funds through the Minnesota DNR and this commission. And there is much more money available to us if we have a proper plan in place for how we wanna spend it and how it can increase that recreation and tourism aspect of our community. So there's, kinda, I, I asked Mr. Emery to put together a estimate of service to have WSN be able to come up with kind of a conceptual design for the entire LeFave Park area to include the boat ramp, recognizing that right on the forks of the river, we have a greenway plan that was drawn up by a student at UND a few years ago and was adopted by the council, but it's, it's truly just in plan form within the Greenways Plan. It doesn't have any true architectural or engineer's concept put to it to be able to have estimates. And so what I'd request of you for this is that we could work on, it'd be on an hourly, not to exceed basis with WSN. And the not to exceed part of it is six thousand dollars. To be able to have WSN prepare a conceptual design for that entire area of how it can be improved, looking at accessibility, looking at the layout, looking at the boat ramp and how that fits into it, and then be able to have that at our ready so that when we get into a conversation with the DNR about improving the boat ramp and the, getting into a conversation about applying for and hosting the governor's fishing opener, and being able to, in June, again, prepare an application to the Red Lake River Corridor project for funding through the legacy dollars, that we would have some hard numbers that I can take back to all those different parties and, and request funds from. So really, at this point, it would just be conceptual. The option two that's in this part of it, I would suggest not moving forward on that at this time, because if we were to get grant dollars, those, all of those funds would be able to be applied to a match through the grant. But we, if, we couldn't apply it if we've already done the work ahead of time. So that, that would be my suggestion, is we just look at the conceptual side of it to start the option one, and be able to have some community meetings and meet, meet with the landscape architect and look at just what we would want out of the boat ramp. The one area, Brad Durick is a local fishing guy that heads up the Shields Boundary Waters. He's, he and I have had some good conversation in the last few months about it. And one of his big concerns, and it'll come out if we can get into doing a concept on this, is that if we replace the current boat ramp, we're gonna lose, we know we would lose that for one fishing season. And that concerns him, just because it's the only access we have on the Minnesota side to the Red River. And it is so busy with as many as forty boats on a weeknight launching out of it. So his, he has the idea that he wanted me to share is that we would build a new boat ramp first. He thinks we have the capacity, I know during the catfishing, the Cats Incredible tournament, we have the capacity of needing two slips for two boats to be able to launch.
South.
So that's, that's his, his request is put one further south first, closer to the fork in the river. Once that one is done, completely running, then remove the current one and rebuild it. So eventually, we have two slips so that when we have boats launching, if emergency services need to get on the water, whatever it may be, we have two places that they can do that without an interruption. Again, just, I wanted to throw that out-
So like two singles instead of a double?
Two singles instead of a double. And, and his, I don't use the river, I don't have the experience, some of you may, may have that. But his reasoning for that is that if you put a double slip like you're similar, or you're more familiar with, you seen in a lake setting, that the current is so strong there that it'll pull that southernmost boat right into the northernmost. You wouldn't be able to use this double ramp anyway, 'cause you couldn't put two trailers in at the same time and have them safely be able to launch. So if we had them separated, that, we'd be able to do that. So just a lot, kind of a lot more there for conversation. But I think that would be a nice step for, to be able to provide me with some, some real armor, to be able to go into these grant requests and to be able to go to the DNR and say, we have it, this is what it's gonna cost, help us with funding for it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been a big proponent of fixing this, this spot up for a long time. It, it is at the location of our name state, of our namesake. It, and it just doesn't live up to the standards of East Grand Forks. I'm, I am excited that, that Reed's been putting this much effort into it. I would, I would very much like to have WSN go ahead and take this, the existing concept, concept and expand on it, piece it out, give us some, some more detail so that when funding comes around, it's available. I'm very much in favor of, of thinking about a, a split, a split ramp, that makes sense. The only thing is, is to make sure it, it gets pushed to the east and, or that the ramps become long enough, 'cause as you just said, as you go further south, that you're coming around, you know, and that gets dicier and dicier, you know. So having them, having the ability to really go in outside of the-
Deeper.
The channel of the river, yeah.
You're talking deeper-
Yeah, deeper into the ground.
Into the bank.
Yeah, deeper into the bank, getting them out of that current better and stuff. Obviously, if you do that, we may need to think about additional dockage and all that other stuff. You know, WSN had a project that I saw down in, near Brainerd or somewhere. And they did like a boardwalk kind of a concept. Now, obviously, with our flooding issues, it doesn't work quite the same as lake and, and those type of rivers that are much more flood-controlled, you know, they have damming and stuff like that, that limits their, their flood height. But I would like them to see, maybe try to take some of those concepts that they have on that and push them onto the land and have something that goes along the river so people can, can use it. The other thing I would like to say is, we, obviously the first-class boat ramp, it should be the focal point of, of any concept down there. But the other thing that we really need to do is, if, we have to decide if we wanna allow traffic down there. And then if we are, how do you contain that traffic and limit it and do it in a way that looks good, keeps it, keeps it nice? You know, if you go with the gravel base or whatever, you know, it's fine. But have an ability to put bollards up there, and not just the bollards that we have on our levees right now that are all missing the center post, 'cause we don't put them in. But, but have a system that if it rains, parking wreck or public works can go down there and shut it off, and we aren't gonna have people making a mess down there. But, yeah, doing that, working with landscaping to get, you know, figure out a way that we can start replacing some of those giant trees that were down there, you know, that we lost due to flood protection and all that stuff. Now, obviously, none of us are gonna be here a hundred years down in the future when giant trees are growing again, but we need to start now. The other thing is, I, I remember talking to folks, and that natural playground was a hit. People liked the idea of that. So if we can put some sort of numbers or put some sort of concept to that. And then my final thing is, I think, you know, we just talked about a little while ago about how much TIF money we have, and there's somewhere around a million dollars in our TIF, TIF fund. I think that this, not for the entire million, but for any matching and any of that kinda stuff that could come out of this, leveraging, if we can get to twenty-five percent or fifteen percent, leveraging quarter million or half a million dollars of that TIF, TIF money would be a fantastic use of TIF money, because it would enhance that downtown area, it would enhance our entire community. It would bring in, it would be a focal point, you know, for fishing tournaments, all those type of things that we wanna bring and be proud of in our community. So that would be, in my opinion, a perfect use for some of that TIF money. So, thank you.
I agree with Mr. Demers about trying to come up with a plan to try to figure this out. I'm tired of driving by or driving around there and, and looking and, and on days where it's semi-muddy. It's the four-wheel-drive mudfest of the world down there with some kid that thinks he's gonna try to run those big tires through it. It just, it's a mess. And I think that there's other opportunities beyond, once we get that thing done, I think there's other opportunities that we can cash in on, community-wise, especially if we're gonna do two ramps. You build somewhat of a decent-sized parking lot that could be used for different things in the future. Figure out a way to get possibly power. I don't know if we, if, what we would need to do, we got power in the campground, but I don't know what that would look like for power down there. So we could have a decent supply in case we would have a larger event down there that would require water and different things. I think it would be a, a good opportunity for us. So I'm definitely in favor.
And build in the kinds of safeguards, 'cause no matter how nice you make it, somebody's gonna try to go muddin' down there, right? So we'll wanna build in, you know, whether it's well-lit and whatnot, we can patrol it and then have a way to maybe close it off at certain times. You better do a good job tomorrow with that extra couple hundred thousand dollars a year. Gotcha, man. We got a lot of stuff on our plate.
Anybody have any other questions or comments for Mr.?
Are there any restrooms or anything down there? Or just use the ones up by the Sacred Heart?
I don't think you'll have a facility down there.
Most of the times, there's porta potties.
You can't build a-
Plug plant.
No.
You gotta build one with a plug in.
Right. You'd have to really elevate a mound. Yeah.
It would be a self-claimed mound. It would be a great service if it was possible. I think, I asked Steve that when we got together and talked about this. I asked him what the rules are on it down there. The concept that if any of you ever go to Park Rapids, the Heartland Trail Park that's right in Park Rapids, the Red Bridge Park, talking about keeping people off of where they're not supposed to be, they have beautiful paved roads with white-painted wooden pillars like every two feet. And you could not possibly get off of the road, even if you wanted to. That's the kinda, what I have in my mind of it, is a road that loops through there that, with parking spaces and just, I think it'd be beautiful and it'd keep people where they're supposed to be and let turf be established where it needs to be, and relatively easy to clean up should we get flooded, with pressure washers and brushes to clean off the roads and you're on your way.
Turning a dead space into an asset.
Yep. Anybody else have anything? Reed?
I'm always fine.
You have enough direction, sir? I do, thank you. Good. Move on to number five, request to purchase Toro forty-one ten D mower snowblower. Thank you again. A few weeks ago, we had a two thousand six Toro that we were using as a snowblower that started on fire. It started a fire kind of in the, the overhead cab, the ceiling area, something, I'm assuming it was electrical or heat-related. But it was on the south end of town. We didn't have a fire extinguisher nearby, so by the time the fire department got there, it was totally torched. So it's a total loss. And we, we would like to be able to replace that. It was one of, we, if you all recall, we bought a Toolcat with a snowblower attachment a couple of years ago. This was our second snowblower machine, so two for our apartment. It also gets used as a mower in the summer. It's a ten-foot mowing deck for the summer months. So the League of Minnesota Cities and myself have been back and forth quite a bit and agreed on a value for the, the two thousand six, for the total loss of the machine and the blower. We, we estimated it at, the machine at nineteen-five and the snow thrower at thirty-eight fifty, three thousand eight hundred and fifty. And our, our policy will pay up to two hundred percent of that if we replace it. So if we replace the machine, they will pay forty-five thousand three hundred and fifty. That's minus the deductible, and we'll actually buy back that snowblower on salvage. For a couple hundred dollars, we can buy the salvage, the machine and the blower and salvage wheels and, and the blower itself. I think we can rewire it, rerun the hydraulics and find another machine to attach it to. With that said, just to preface, so you all understand, that blower is thirteen years- is, uh, thirteen years old, and if we attach it to a machine, it'll be a machine that's older than that, so it'd be a, a mower that's a two thousand and one to a two thousand and five area. That snowblower is not compatible with newer machines, which is why we have to replace both. Um, so the total, the price is, is wrong in the packet you have. Uh, that was for a, a summer cab option. At the time that I got the price, they didn't think they could give us a winter-only cab. They've since come back today and said that they could give us a winter-only cab. So, the new price, the Minnesota State Contracting Price from MTI is eighty-six thousand thirteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. So, I've, all, and it'll be in the packet for next week's meeting. Um, I'd like authorization to buy that machine with the snow thrower attachment, and the city's responsibility would be forty thousand dollars, six hundred, or forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-three and seventy-nine cents. And we would pay that out of the CIP, out of our capital improvement fund. Um, we have in the, the plan to buy a new mower with blower attachment in two thousand and twenty-one, so we'd kind of just have, we'd basically be borrowing from that fund in advance, and we, Carla has said that we do have the funds there to do it. It's just it, it would get it two years ahead of time and we'd pay back the fund.
I didn't see on the list, does it come with the fire extinguisher?
That was, that was my question.
Yes.
Next, the cigarette lighter adapter?
Perfect. That was, that was mine, too.
This, it'll, it'll still be, the cab will be removed in the summer.
It won't have air.
It won't have air conditioning, and that was, uh, it has that option for the higher price that you saw listed, but talking to the mechanics, they requested that it be one without air conditioning, that we can remove the cab. They, we had in the past purchased one that had air conditioning and it just didn't work. Um, it was more of a headache than it was worth it. So, this is a better route to go in their opinion.
Anybody have any questions, Reed? See none? Thank you, sir. Next, request to move Sherlock Forest Playground Funds into Designated Endowment Fund with Community Foundation. Reed?
Thank you again. Uh, when the Sherlock Forest Playground had the fire and was rebuilt, there were no fire extinguishers there either. Uh, when it was rebuilt, there was a savings account established, uh, that the community penny paid, headed up, of course, y'all remember that, to, to raise money. There's still thirty-five thousand dollars and change in a, in account at the community foundation that has basically been sitting idle for the last, for sure, the last three years, that, that amount has never changed. We've had some, uh, withdrawals from it to do some maintenance work prior to, for sure, prior to two thousand and sixteen. Um, so they approached David, the community foundation did, and, and asked about if we're, if we don't have any immediate plans for those funds, if we'd be interested in rolling them into an endowment so that we can start having some growth off of the account. Um, so he asked me, "Do we have any, any plans for the funds?" I did tell him that this spring I did plan on having to tap into some of it. There is some deferred maintenance in the playground that needs to be addressed, um, some equipment that just is, is at a point that safely it needs to be replaced. Uh, you can see when you drive by, some of the boards, they need to be repainted. It's gonna take a little bit of a project to get it back up. I don't have an exact dollar amount of what that's gonna cost yet, because I need to get in when the snow melts and really truly assess everything, but I think that what I asked the Park and Rec Commission to, to recommend was that we ask for a withdrawal of eight thousand dollars from that account to be able to get us through with pre-placing slides and chains and swings that are needed, and then roll the remaining amount into, uh, into an endowment if that's the, the direction that you all would wish to go. So, they made, the Park and Rec Commission made that recommendation. So, it'd be, at the end of the day, we'd request eight thousand dollars from the fund, uh, that they'd make payable to the city for that purpose, and then twenty-seven thousand one forty-one thirty-seven could be rolled into an endowment.
Fair.
In an endowment, at what interval could you withdraw funds if you wanted to?
The, yep, good question. Um, it can be withdrawn on an annual basis, five, the, the terminology is, they use a, a twelve-quarter rolling average of the growth, so three-year average of the growth, and we can withdraw up to five percent of that growth. So, at the start, there is not gonna be a lot of, there isn't gonna be a lot to, to withdraw. We could do it on an annual basis if we want to. If we know we have a project coming up, we could ask them to say, take two thousand and nineteen's growth and hold on to it until the end of two thousand and twenty, and then in two thousand and twenty-one, we could take both years withdrawal if we, if we knew we were gonna have a purpose for that, or we have the option every year of just asking to roll that growth right back into the principal and continue to build. Um, the other great thing it does is we could start, knowing that this would be an endowment, we could start to advertise that to people at, at the end of the year, when they're looking to make charitable donations for their taxes, this would be a great, great way for them to do that. Uh, the cost to maintain it, uh, for the community foundation to maintain it, it's one percent of the balance per year, and they, they, they withdraw a quarter percent, uh, per quarter for that. So, we, it's not going to have a lot of gains early on, um, but the fact that it's been sitting unused for a long time, and I can see Clarence smiling, the fact that it's been sitting untapped for a long time, there may be good options still to consider it.
Have we looked at taking it totally either and putting in something else, though?
No.
And another, you know, CD, or, I mean, whatever, I mean, other mutual fund count, whatever.
If we take it, do we have to spend it right away?
I, I guess that's one thing I never even thought of at the meeting that day.
Yeah.
You've given up a lot. Even if the fund makes ten percent, you get twenty-seven hundred a year, five percent of that's a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Plus the surcharge that they're gonna, yeah.
And you can't withdraw anything beyond that. You have, that's the max you can withdraw?
Yeah, the way that I read it. That's the way that I read it.
I'd say have Carla look at other vehicles that we could put it into.
Let me, let me, I believe we can, we can, we could draw the, the growth. We can't draw the principal.
That's what I'm saying.
So, it's not five percent of the growth. It's, it's, it's.
Five percent of the balance?
No, whatever the growth is.
Right, so that's a hundred and thirty-five. That's a figure.
My, my next question then is, with that, since it's been, how many years since they got rebuilt after the fire?
It's been four or five years.
So, I mean, you're getting out to a timeframe where you're probably gonna have more maintenance than you have in the last couple of years because it's basically new. So, you're gonna have to look at going, okay, beforehand, you know, if, when it was done in the first place years ago, what maintenance did we have, and then we had to redo it because of the fire, what is gonna happen again down the road that we're gonna need that money for to do that?
Yeah.
Because I think maybe there's, might be some more maintenance thing might happen in three years down the road, and with that growth of, it's not, you're not gonna be able to take much out of there. And then you're gonna have to come back to, to the city and say, "Okay, we need to take it out of the budget to do this." You know, it's a very good point.
Is there a way to put it in another vehicle and still make that opportunity available to those who would want to donate? You know, to, to create like a perpetual maintenance fund, kind of like you might have at a cemetery, that you wouldn't have to have a concern from a city budget standpoint, that there's a pool of funds there that should take care of it kind of to perpetuity if, if we wanted to do that. I think that there's a lot of goodwill for that playground, and maybe folks would donate if there was some vehicle that we created, not maybe the endowment, but one that we had access to whatever part of the funds we needed.
Money market fund or something that we could draw off of as much as we want.
I, I mean, to me, twenty-seven thousand dollars, it's not anything to build an endowment around. I mean, you look, I mean, these are, it's not like the community foundation is out of line. That's a typical, you know, withdrawal formula for a fund, but they're usually, you're looking at million-dollar funds or, you know, these things. And the way I look at it is, the people in this community raise those monies, they, you know, or not just, not all the people, but lots of people to build that and then rebuild that. I think you can chase a lot of, a lot of time and effort in trying to maintain that thirty-five thousand dollars or try to grow it. I just think it's the city's responsibility to maintain that. You know, we have extra that we, uh, that we didn't spend in building it, use it for maintenance specific to that, but after that, I mean, it's, it's our responsibility as a city to maintain it, to keep it up and do all those things. Um, I don't think we should try and, and eke every, or try, I think the idea is, you have this money and it was for some purpose and, you know, we, we have a, a duty to try to keep this money intact and grow it, and I just don't think you're gonna be able to do that. I don't see it as being a huge thing that people are donating, uh, to this to, maybe not. But I just think if, if we need to repair it, we need to replace it, put it in our budget and we'll replace it. We, we know it's something that's important, so let's do it, you know.
The Friends of the Library have an endowment with the community foundation, and it's set up so that if the library needs any of that money, we apply and we can get a grant directly back to the library. So, the money is accessible to us. We also get that, you know, up to five percent of the growth offered back each year to the Friends, and some years they put it back in and some years they take it. But the monies are available to us through the grant program.
That was good clarification, you guys, I mean. I think we have to worry too about having, let's say we took the money out of that and you had it in the fund here at the city, like we've had with other funds that Floodwall Fund or whatever it may be, or whatever fund it is, that that's what it's used for.
And then maybe that's a, if, that, that does change the perspective. If you can go in and just write your own grant to get your own money, I would imagine the success rate is pretty high on those, on that grant writing for both. Um, I don't necessarily have a, a problem then keeping it there, but my point is, is I don't also think that we have, that we should spend a lot of time trying to maintain that fund or try to grow it or anything like that. If, if that's, that would be for some outside group, that would be like for a Blue Lung Club or a Friends of the, of the Library type group to try to work on something like that. If they want to put their effort into that, that's not really a, that's, in my opinion, that's not a function or should be a, something that city government should be doing. I think we should, we have our revenue stream and, and we should pay for the gifts that we've been given, and if other people want to work on gifts and, and those type of things, we should encourage them to do that, but outside of the, the city process.
Carla?
We have a Campbell Trust Fund, so we couldn't open up a fund and just name it, so that's just for that. And it would be restricted to only make payments for that.
And, and hear me loud and clear, nowhere in here was I saying that the city council should go out and knock on doors and solicit funds for the campground. It would only be if you created it and maybe the group just did come forward and say, "You know what? We do love this thing and, and we're gonna help take some ownership here and, and see that that stays funded." So, nowhere was I trying to put our council or our city staff on, on the fundraising effort, but I do know there was a lot of passion behind
Absolutely.
building and rebuilding.
I guess you got some couple of questions to look at and ideas and go from there.
Excellent.
Okay. Anything else for Reed on that? See none, entertain a motion adjourned. By Grouse, a second, may repeal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.